Good morning, I am Councilman Robert Stokes, Chair of Education, Workforce and Youth Committee. We are here, we are meeting to discuss Council Resolution 21-0050R in a formal hearing, Museum Workers' Right to Organize, for the purpose of inviting, inviting the city solicitor, Director of Department of Human Resources Representatives from the Walters Art Museum and Ask Me Council 67 to discuss the feasibility of unionization of museum workers. I just want to identify the committee members. I see Councilman Zeke Cohen from the First District, Councilman Glover from the 13th District, Vice President Sarah Middleton from the 6th District, Councilwoman Porter from the 10th District. Okay, I don't see. Is Councilman Torrance on? Okay, Councilman Torrance also. Let's see. Black. Okay, well, also I see Nikki Thomas from President Mosby's office. Marguerite, the great Marguerite Carr, the staff person here that does a great job with this committee.
Mr. Chair, Chris Burnett here as well.
I was going to get you, Councilman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Did I miss anyone? I don't see. Okay, if I missed anyone, please speak up. Because I don't seem to have missed anyone. Before I start, I'm going to ask all speakers and panelists to mute yourself when you're not speaking. Identify yourself before you speak. Speak slowly and clearly. After you finish speaking, please mute yourself again until you have, until you have asked to speak again. First of all, we will be seeing the open remarks from the sponsors bill, Councilman Torrance, primary sponsor of the resolution. Before you start, Councilman, Councilman Bullock, who is a committee member from the 9th District. Councilman Torrance, if you have any opening remarks, it's, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry about that. I have a slight delay because Comcast just went out on me at my home, so I'm on my hot spot right now. So if my internet goes out or my modem goes out, that's why for the public. But I just want to thank you, Mr. Chair, for holding this hearing today, as well as my colleagues, as well as the workers from the Walters and Walters staff as well. Good morning, everyone. The potential unionization of workers at the Walters Art Museum advances important conversations concerning transparency, equity and collective bargaining. Articulating clear administrative policies and promoting an inclusive workforce should be a top priority to all employers and organizations in Baltimore. Today, we will hear the Walters Board members regarding the museum's commitment to diversity, job security and commitment and community engagement. In addition, we will hear from Ask Me, as well as workers regarding the need for a union to advance the rights to workers at the Walters. I'd like to emphasize the importance of transparency, moderate, moderated elections to have clear recognition, recognition of the views of all Walters employees and verify majority support. Now, several election processes are being explored. Overall, this hearing will allow us to better understand the importance of the labor election process, the implications of it, as well as understand city and state laws that regulate unionization at the Walters. I look forward to this hearing and hear the information that comes forth, but also understanding that while examining the comments and the conversations that we've had over the last couple of months, my deepest concern right now is for the workers who are the least paid, which are our security guards at the Walters. And I, I will be clear that both parties have said that they want actual vote. The question is, would votes more inclusive or not inclusive of every one at the Walters? And I look forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Councilman. We're going to go over to the agency reports from the Law Department. Ms. Hillary Ruley, would you like to discuss your report or have any additional comments?
Yes, I just, this is Hillary Ruley from the Law Department. Obviously, this is a resolution, and so the resolution itself is approved for form and legal sufficiency, because it, you know, pretty much any topic is suitable to discuss in a city council resolution. We did note in our bill report that the Walters employees are not municipal employees of the city of Baltimore. The Walters is not a city agency. They're not subject to any of the city laws or bargaining. But this doesn't mean that they cannot unionize. Just like any other private company, they are free to unionize. My understanding is both their anticipated union, as well as the Walters, both have experienced labor law lawyers to do this. This kind of process is far beyond my legal expertise or anyone in the Law Department. It's complicated. It has a bunch of determinations of federal labor law, and we wouldn't have anything to say on those particular issues, you know, voting or any of that kind of thing. It's not within our expertise. So, you know, certainly, we couldn't opine on that. What we can say is it isn't something the city can effectuate. But again, the resolution itself is approved for form and legal sufficiency. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Human Resources, is anyone in?
Yes, this is Kumal Makini. I'm the Senior Compliance Officer with the Department of Human Resources, here to represent DHR. And we do not have anything to add to our report, Mr. Chair.
So you take no position deferred to the Labor Commission and the Law Department?
That is correct.
Anybody here from the Labor Commission? Who wish to, who want to comment?
Mr. Chair, this is Nina Dumbless with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The Labor Commissioner is supposed to be joining. I don't see her on yet, but I will, I will check in with her office.
Thank you, Ms. Nina, and I did not recognize you from the Mayor's office, so I will apologize. Do any of the committee, committee or council members have any questions for the agency representatives? Okay, questions? Next, we have a 10 to 20 minute set aside for the following speakers to testify. I don't know if President Glenn Middleton is on the phone, phone from Ask Me 67? Okay, I guess Mr. Patterson, you will be doing the presentation.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Glenn's here.
Okay, so I understand Mr. Patterson is going to be doing the presentation? Okay, hold on, I'm sorry. Mr. President, do you have anything you want to say? I apologize.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Are you ready for me to speak?
Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Robert Stokes, Councilman Robert Stokes. And good morning to the esteemed Baltimore City Council members. But also, good morning to the Baltimore City Walters Art Museum supporters. I'm Glenn Middleton, and I am the Executive Director of Ask Me Maryland Council 67. I also serve as the International Vice President of Ask Me. And I also serve as the interim president of the Baltimore Metropolitan Council here in Baltimore City. And I'm also a local president, Local 44, the president of Baltimore City Employees. Our union, Ask Me, represents over 6,000 workers. I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman and the Baltimore City Council for having this meeting this morning. I want to thank each of you for your amazing work and job that you've done during this crisis in the city of Baltimore. I'm honored to speak today about the need to extend collective bargaining rights to the, the workers at the Walters Art Museum. In the city of Baltimore, nearly every employee is granted the right to collectively bargain. I know you believe in those rights, just as our union does at Ask Me. Yet despite being employed by a city agency, Baltimore City Walters Art Museum workers have been left out. I don't want to spend time today talking about how that happened. I want us to talk about how we right this wrong, this awful wrong, and fix the situation for these workers, who live here, who worship here, and also pay taxes here. And they vote here also. As those of us who have visited the Walters Art Museum know, its art collection focuses on historical pieces. That doesn't mean the museum should live in the past. The actions of the Baltimore City Walters Art Museum remind me of a time when Baltimore City didn't have collective bargaining. Museum director thinks she can unilaterally determine the process for workers forming their own union. One person should not have this amount of power over employees of any city agency, not in Baltimore City, not anywhere else throughout this state. Make no mistake, the action of the Baltimore City Walters Art Museum are what we call "union busting" in pure and simple. Despite several invitations extended by the workers there, Julia Marcieri Alexander, the museum director, has not met with us in six months since they reached a supermajority of support. This exemplifies the culture of disrespect experienced by these workers on a regular basis and is unacceptable in this day and time. In those six months, the union and the Baltimore City Walters Art Museum could have come to an agreement on a process to demonstrate this majority support and get our union recognized, Ask Me. We should be partnering with the Baltimore City Walters Art Museum through labor management committees to address concern to both workers and management and build a strong relationship based on mutual respect for all of us. We could be at the bargaining table negotiating positive changes to lift morale and stem the hemorrhage of workers from the Baltimore City Walters Art Museum. And as I close out, the questions for each of you is, will you enable this union busting or will you hold this city agency? The Baltimore City Walters Art Museum accountable. It's important that we do that. Will you allow some employees of city agencies to be treated like second-class citizens? Because that's what's going on, with no former union voice. Or will you act to lift them up? Which I know this council will. These esteemed workers want a voice on the job and they're seated at the table, and everyone deserves that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I don't hear him. Sorry, guys, I didn't unmute myself. I want to recognize Councilman Costello from the 11th District, Councilwoman Odet Ramos from the 14th District, and Ms. Yvette Brown from the Labor Commission is here. Would you wish to comment on the resolution?
Good morning. My name's Yvette Brown. I'm here representing the Office of the Labor Commissioner, and we don't really take a stand on it, but we are able to certify the election once it takes place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Council Vice President is joining us via the phone. I just wanted to let you know.
I, I did recognize already. All right. Mr. Patterson, you will be doing the presentation on behalf of Ask Me, am I correct?
Yes, thank you.
The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the council. I do have a presentation, PowerPoint presentation, so I'm going to try and share my screen. But I first did want to just thank you on behalf of Ask Me, Walters Workers United, on behalf of Ask Me President Lee Saunders and the 1.4 members of Ask Me that stand in solidarity with Walters Workers United. And in a way, there's just one major problem here. And that's that the Walters management won't accept the employee's choice to have a union. It refuses to respond, and it's actually working actively to defeat its employees' desires. Now, Walters hasn't come out and said that. Instead, they state only that there must be an NRV-conducted election. Today, I quote to explain how that claim is a ruse designed to bust a union and defeat its employees' rights. And that's because Walters is not within the NRV's jurisdiction. And even if the NRV would hold an election, it wouldn't be able to certify Walters Workers United. But there is an easy and clear solution to this, and that's a voluntary recognition agreement, which could incorporate a private election, a secret ballot election. And we are also here to ask that if the Walters won't agree to that reasonable request that the mayor and city council should adopt an ordinance, which is well within its power, to grant these basic rights to Walters employees. I'm going to now try to share my screen so I can explain some of those points. Are you able to see the PowerPoint at this point? Okay, so why is Walters not covered by the NRA? It's because the NRA, National Labor Relations Act, applies only to private industry. It doesn't have jurisdiction over public entities, which includes public corporations. The U.S. Supreme Court in Hawkins County adopted a test, this was in the 1970s, to determine when an entity is a public entity or private entity. It's a matter of federal law. And that test asked two questions. And if the answer to either question is yes, then, then the entity is not covered by the NRV, not within the NRV's jurisdiction. And the test asks, was the entity created directly by the city so as to constitute a department or an administrative function of the government? The second question is, is it administered by individuals responsible to public officials or the general electorate? Now, the answer to that first question is clearly yes. The Walters was created by a state statute, by city ordinance, and it fulfills a municipal purpose, which is, on behalf of the city, it, the 1933 Act that establishes the Walters states that it is an agent of the city, the purpose of which is to administer the city's property and artworks and endowment, which goes to a city, to the trustees directly on behalf of the city. It's clear that, under this test, Walters is a public institution and is not subject to the National Labor Relations Act. So, so why does Walters want, Walters management, I should say, insist on an NRV election? It's really not about elections, because we want an election. It's about union busting. The question of the NRV's jurisdiction of these workers presents an issue in any NRV proceeding, which can be appealed at every level, from the regional offices to the third NRV, to the circuit courts, and ultimately to the Supreme Court that takes up the case. That is a process, and I've seen this happen, that can take a decade or more to play out. So you see, the demand for an NRV election is really a trap, a trap to drag this process out. But at the end of the day, we don't know where we'll be. We think the NRV will ultimately decline to take jurisdiction, which brings us back to square one. There's also another reason. And that's because of an anachronistic quirk in the NRA, the ways drafted, which although permits a bargaining unit to include guards and non-guards, and for a union to represent guards and non-guards, it can't be required of an employer under the Act to agree to such a unit. And if the NRV cannot certify a unit over an employer's objections, it will not hold an election for that unit. It simply will not profit process an election petition filed by the union. So what this does is it deprives Walters workers of their right to have a union of their choice that includes all of them within one strong union. So you see, the NRV question here is really just a trap for us. And I would submit to you that it's, it's, it's not a legitimate position, because if Walters wanted to have an NRV election, if the Walters management wanted that, they could file a petition for an election with the NRV at any time, because our union has demanded to be recognized. But they haven't done that. And that's because when a employer thinks there's a question concerning representation, that's a term of art from the Act, it can file what's called an RM petition, a management petition. Walters hasn't done that. And the reason is because there's no question concerning representation. They know that Walters employees have overwhelmingly chosen this union to represent them. Now fortunately, there's a clear path forward here, which is voluntary recognition, which can include a private election agreement. It's extremely common in the public and nonprofit sector, but also in private industry generally. In a decision called Lemon's Gasket, which issued in 2011, statistics are hard to come by, but in this decision, the board said that in the prior four years, it had received over 1,300 notices of voluntary recognition from private sector employers. And that doesn't even begin to describe the public sector or quasi-public sector. And as I've said, we do not object to an election. We want one, we just can't have one from the NRV. And there's many ways to have an election here through other individuals. The Baltimore Labor Commissioner could conduct one. The Federal Mediation and Conciliation Service could conduct an election. The American Arbitration Association could conduct an election. Really, any official, elected, unelected, really any person the parties agree on could conduct a secret ballot election to determine this question of representation. I would wanted to note too that even to see if Baltimore has authorized voluntary recognition for certain employees, specifically in this, in this slide that shows executive order showing home care workers have the opportunity to elect a, to obtain recognition through a car check. And really, there are just countless examples of voluntary recognition agreements, including private election or car check in the government and other institutions and in the nonprofit sector. Why, and why would it be particularly appropriate for nonprofits? It's in light of the public good and public missions that these nonprofits serve, so they can focus on their charitable or beneficial mission. It's because donors and the public often place limits on their use of resources. And these are public-facing institutions who don't want to have drawn-out protracted processes. It undermines their credibility within the community. And most of all, they believe and understand and realize the benefits of a cooperative labor-management relationship can bring to their institution, the mission and to the public at large. And you will hear from Walters workers today about how that can happen. Now, I wanted to give one kind of example or case study that's close to home, and that's the Open Society Institute's Baltimore office. The Open Society Institute has a number of offices, and it agreed to a American Arbitration Association supervised election for its Baltimore employees in 2016. Those employees selected the communication workers of their union, and they ultimately negotiated a contract. Now, there's a lot of overlap here between OSI Baltimore and the Walters. For example, the Walters Board Chairperson, Mr. DeGraffin Wright, is an advisory board member of OSI Baltimore. Alicia Wilson sits on both the Walters and OSI Baltimore boards. Judge Andre Davis, the former city solicitor of Baltimore, is a Walters board member and was an OSI Baltimore board member at that time. And this arrangement was extremely beneficial to OSI. And so one has to ask, why would voluntary recognition be appropriate for OSI Baltimore and not the Walters? We are asking an absolute consensual resolution of this problem, one where the Walters and Walters Workers United reach an agreement quickly and expeditiously. We would ask the mayor and city council adopt an ordinance providing for collective bargaining for these employees. Such an ordinance would be entirely proper and consistent with state law and the city charters, which confers on the city council all the power commonly known as the police power to the extent the state has or could exercise that power within the limits of the Baltimore City. You've done this in the past when it comes to things like Lemon Rages. It's clear that an ordinance that would provide for collective bargaining for the Walters employees, regardless of whether they're a public or private institution, is within their authority to do so. If you can, if you can regulate the affairs of private institutions, private organizations, you surely can regulate the affairs of an institution that's owned by the city that the state statute indicates is an agent of the city and over which the city, the mayor and the city council have significant authority. And we would say that such an ordinance would really be consistent with state law. There is no inconsistent state law with such an ordinance. And in fact, the Maryland Labor and Employment Code, Section 4-302, provides that it is state policy that employees should have the right to choose their own collective, to have a collective bargaining representative of their own choice. It's also the federal policy. It's city policy, we understand. It's even a fundamental right that's set forth in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. But Walters workers are being denied this fundamental right. They're even being punished for exercising it. And so we, we ask the city to correct this problem if Walters management does not swiftly move to reach an agreement with us. We've been waiting months and months for that. And so on behalf of Walters Workers United, Ask Me and its 1.4 members, on behalf of our international president, Lee Saunders, I thank you for holding this hearing, and I hope that afterwards you will be moved to take action to resolve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Our next presentation, Ruby Waldo from Walters Employee.
Yes, thank you. And I'm hoping to share my screen as well.
Before we start, Mr. Patterson, can you send us your presentation?
I would be happy to, yes. Would you like me to send that afterwards? Yes, I would send it.
And Ms. Waldo also, we would like to have your presentation also. Thank you. You can, you can, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Morning, everyone. My name is Ruby Waldo. I work at the Walters Art Museum as an educator in the Visitor Experience Department, and I live in District 3 of Baltimore City. I am here today as a representative of Walters Workers United, and I'd like to begin by sharing a few pictures of my coworkers. These are the people whose work makes the museum a vibrant place, from staff and visitor experience to security, to learning and community engagement, to building operations, to conservation, to curatorial, to technical research. A supermajority of us have come together to form Walters Workers United with Ask Me Council 67. But it has been six months since that supermajority of workers signed union cards and sought recognition. Time and time again, we have tried to call leadership in rather than calling them out, but our repeated requests for conversation has been denied. Museum management has refused to even meet with us to discuss a process to move forward cooperatively. Our campaign is centered around the need for pay equity, job security, increased health and safety, and having a voice in the making of decisions that directly affect us. We care deeply for the Walters and its mission to bring art and people together for enjoyment, discovery and learning. We came together as workers to form our union because we want to uplift our collective voice and make the Walters a better place to work. I want to emphasize that our hopes for the museum are not dissimilar to the goals that leadership has shared in its public strategic plan. Having grown up in Baltimore, I've experienced the museum's gravitational pull nearly all my life. My relationship began with the Walters as a child, when I spent many hours in a drop-in studio for weekend art-making and summer camp. Later in high school, at the Baltimore School for the Arts, the museum became a beloved extension of our art history classroom. I imagine you feel similarly, that the Walters is a vital resource in Baltimore City. It is a place for practicing close attention. It's a site for relating to and reflecting on what surrounds us. Throughout my time at the Walters, I've witnessed glimmers of what the museum could be, and it is always rooted in the care that my fellow workers demonstrate each day. Surely, there are moments when the museum may feel like a solace, but I can only imagine what such a place might feel like if its workers were treated with compassion and dignity. I'd like to summarize some of our key concerns that you will hear more about in other testimony.[1715.25] I want to acknowledge that it is not ideal for us to be here today doing this so publicly. But we have tried to reach out, to schedule private meetings with leadership, and we have tried to make our concerns heard with a community rally. This process could have been done in-house. Our organizing efforts could have been approached with a warmth and a willingness to listen. Instead, we are here today because despite all of our creative, critical, and ongoing efforts, museum leadership refuses to hear us. I'll begin by sharing that the museum's practice of terminating staff without notice has become so prevalent, we have a term for it: being disappeared. Since May, the museum has continued to dismantle what was formerly the Education and Public Programming Department. This was the nexus between the museum and the Baltimore community. After splitting the department into two, both are now extremely understaffed. From a combined total of 25 people, now down to only six. Over the past four years, the team I have been a part of has been held together by a commitment to thoughtful nurturing programs for youth and families. Not unlike in other departments, our care has been taken advantage of. I've witnessed countless colleagues join our team with enthusiasm, only to leave a year later feeling overworked and underpaid. In this process of hiring and rehiring, part-time workers take on additional work to sustain programs, but do not receive recognition or compensation for these efforts. A week ago, the museum decided to pursue a strategy to reduce a team of three educators down to only two by asking one educator to leave on their own accord or force all to reapply for their jobs, knowing one position would be eliminated. The last few days have been overwhelming, to say the least, as my coworkers and I seek to balance financial stability and professional relationships while continuing to do meaningful work, despite the disruption from these top-down decisions. But I feel passionate about unionizing when I think about the relationships my coworkers and I have built with youth and families over the years. When familiar joyful faces show up to the museum, ready to learn and to make, the institution feels for a moment like a real community center. Our casual and dependable programming has become a weekend ritual for many families across the city. But it takes time and consistency to grow the trust that allows for these relationships. It is incredibly difficult to do this work when the atmosphere is confusing, precarious, and at times scary. So it concerns me greatly that decisions to eliminate positions in our department are thought of as inconsequential to people's lives. I also want to highlight the inequity in how staff is treated. Part-time workers like myself are paid less per hour than full-time workers, all the while doing the same work as our full-time counterparts. Despite all of the public financial support received by the museum, part-time employees who work less than 30 hours do not receive any benefits. This means no paid time off, no sick days, and no health insurance. Most of our part-time employees are gallery officers, museum educators, or worked in retail. We are talking about the lowest-paid positions, and we are talking about the positions that have the most people of color. And sadly, the museum is trying to railroad us. A unionization process through the NLRB will divide us further by denying gallery officers and security staff a vote on the union of their choice. And there has also been retaliation. Leadership has silenced workers by disabling the chat function and our ability to ask questions during Zoom meetings, as well as the ability to send all staff emails to communicate concerns, such as our questions related to COVID health and safety. Longtime staff have been fired after speaking out at our union rally and to clearly intimidate the rest of staff. An announcement of this firing was sent from leadership to all workers.
Ms. Waldo, real quick, you're gonna have to wrap it up as soon as you can, because we got other people.
Thank you. Last week, the museum abruptly halted the work of the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Access Committee. This decision was explicitly made in response to our organizing efforts. This working group was one of the only opportunities staff had to speak to board members, and now even that avenue has been restricted. I ask that if you were to take away three things today, that they would be the following. The first is that we are turning to you as city council to stop an increasingly hostile, tense, and manipulative workplace. We need you as people in positions of power to take action to hold your city agency accountable. The second is that the Walters has multiple options on how to move forward. They can simply recognize our union, or they can agree to an election where we can all vote. What we as Walters Workers United care about is staying together. We will not let some of the most vulnerable workers stand alone. We need all of our union cards to be counted in a local election. And last, I want to remind you that we are doing this because we love the museum, and that is not in dispute. We love our coworkers and are committed to our work, and that is not at odds with wanting to have a voice in our workplace. In closing, I'd like to share a project that I worked with middle school students.
Ms. Waldo, you're gonna, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but we got other speakers, and we have council people that have questions, so you.
I just, I just have one, one last, one last thing to say.
Yeah, okay.
In closing, I'd like to share this project that I worked on with middle school students a few years ago. Together, we looked at this treasured Renaissance painting in the Walters collection called The Ideal City. Gathered around this painting, I asked my students to take some time to imagine what an ideal city would mean to them. What would it look like? What would it feel like? What would it sound like and smell like? Engaging with this painting in the gallery was a way to exercise our civic imagination, and today I am inviting you to do the same. As city workers, we have not only imagined how our workplace needs to change, but we have articulated, organized, and demanded that our concerns be addressed. We are here today because we have yet to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Make sure we get a copy of that, please. Thank you. Dr. Alexander, Director of Walters Art Museum, would you like to speak or comment?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and yes, thank you, I would very much. I have a presentation that I'm not, I'm, I'll just speak. But first of all, thank you so much, Councilwoman Stokes, and all of the other members of the Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee for inviting me here to participate in this informational hearing, the purpose of which is to discuss the feasibility of the unionization of, of our museum workers. And today, I'd like to share some perspectives in my role as the Director of the Walters Art Museum. So if there is a single takeaway from my remarks today, then I very much hope it will be this one, which is that there are no institutional impediments to the feasibility of the employees of the Walters Art Museum forming a union or unions if they elect to do so. And the leadership of the museum is not standing in their way. So I was first notified by the Walters Workers United of their intention to unionize in early May, and since that time, I have been consistent in making several points. And these points have been made both to employees internally and publicly at large. And I'm sure many of you have seen my letters to the community that I have written over the course of the summer and earlier in this past spring. The museum's position, which is my position, which is supported wholeheartedly by our Board of Trustees, is not a secret. As the Director of the Walters Art Museum, I represent and must respond to the needs of all of our museum's employees. And just as each one of you council members must represent all of the constituents in your districts, I have that similar obligation. As to the efforts of some of our employees to form a union, my position has been consistently and adamantly one of impartiality and non-interference in this process. That approach is the best approach because it puts all union-eligible employees on the same footing. And I want to be very, very clear on this point. I have said consistently throughout the spring and since the spring, and every time I speak on this issue, management has no role in this process at this point. We have no role to play in the employee's decision to unionize, in the employee's decision which unions with which to affiliate. And we have no role at this point in this process. We should not and will not and cannot take steps to interfere with or influence the outcome of a vote. The most inclusive approach for our employees is to leave this decision at this point in the process to our employees, where that decision belongs. By excluding management from this process, I can be sure that I or we are neither supporting nor opposing employees on either side of the internal employee discussions about whether or not to unionize. So active engagement with one group of employees, a union or unions that do not yet represent the Walters employees, or a group of employees who are not interested in forming a union, each one of these meetings is taking a stance. And I refuse to actively engage because active engagement takes a side for one group or another in this process at this time. So finally, to my third point, there is in fact a very straightforward process available to the employees at this point, and it is a normal and well-established one. It's the only one that is available to employees that absolutely ensures that management remains hands-off in this process and has no role in the process in creating a vote to unionize. It is the process that employees at dozens of art museums and other cultural institutions have used, both in very recent years and across the prior decades, and it has been to great success. And that is a confidential vote in an election managed by the National Labor Relations Board. That board is the agency established by federal law to support and protect employees' rights. Not management's rights, not the union's rights, but the employees' rights. I have heard, and I have heard today again, the argument that we're pushing an NLRB process because I have a secret agenda. I have no secret agenda. Because we want to exclude some eligible employees from being represented. I frankly don't understand where this claim is coming from. And the assumption from the start on my behalf has been that at the conclusion of the process, all eligible staff might be represented by a union or unions with different units represented by different units, unions based on decisions that are made by the NLRB process. Now, let me be repetitive, and let me repeat. I expect, we expect, that every eligible employee will be represented in a unit in the workplace, wall to wall. This is a process that is not only common, but has become the standard in the cultural sector. And I thought you might be interested in some findings that some, from research that I've done in preparation for today's hearing. So just in the last 10 years, over 30 museums have had their employees effectively and efficiently use the NLRB process to form unions. Two-thirds of these institutions have done so in the last two years. As recently as earlier this summer, the Brooklyn Museum, the Whitney Museum, the Portland Museum of Art in Maine, and the Massachusetts of Contemporary Art, their staffs all held votes that were managed by the NLRB. And in fact, some of the Walters employees have themselves publicly cited the Philadelphia Museum of Art as an example to follow. And the Walters management, I absolutely agree with this. Eligible staff there are represented wall to wall, and they form their bargaining unit through an NLRB-managed vote. It should also be noted that employees at every museum that has petitioned the NLRB to create a union have been successful. I'm not aware of any examples in that process that has resulted, has not resulted in a bargaining unit. And I have not aware of anyone that has not, has not ended up in a scenario in which the NLRB has not been supportive of the employees' rights. So to reiterate, the NLRB has managed these processes for a number of privately-run museums, and very recently. And in so doing, they have become well-versed in the very specific nature and needs of museum employees in this sector, and not as much as they are across many, many other industries. Moreover, the NLRB voting process is both fair to employees and incredibly efficient. Among other museums recently, the average time from filing a petition to a certification of union is 31 days. The average time from filing a petition to certification of a union representation is 31 days. By contrast, as has been pointed out, it has been more than 150 days since I was notified of our employees' intentions to form a union as part of the Walters Workers United, and no petition has yet been filed. So I want to end where I began. It is feasible for Walters Art Museum employees to unionize. Any process other than the NLRB process requires management to be involved at this point in which we should not be involved. And that process is constructed that way in order to be fair to all employees. We respect unions at the Walters Art Museum, and we are ready to bargain in good faith with any union or unions our employees elect to represent them. Walters leadership supports our employees' right to get to a vote quickly and to affirm their representation by a union or unions through this vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Alexander. Our next speaker is Gregory Bailey from AskMe67.
Good morning. There, there may have been some confusion. I am a Walters worker and representative of Walters Workers United. Good morning, my name is Gregory Bailey. I'm the Senior Objects Conservator for the Walters Art Museum, and I live.
So you're not an AskMe person?
I do not work for the, or represent formally AFSCMA, no.
Thank you. Go ahead and.
Can I continue?
Yes.
Thank you. The Walters brought me to Baltimore nine years ago, and I've worked in the museum in various capacities for six and a half of those years. I want to emphasize that I am enormously proud and very honored to work for the museum and serve the city and people of Baltimore. As you may know, for the past year and a half, members of staff have worked together with management and members of the board to evaluate and address issues of diversity, equity, accessibility, and inclusion. One of the real successes of this work has been the development in institutional goals, including many particularly devoted to the development and support of a dynamic team of workers. On Tuesday, October 5th, staff were informed by the chair of this working group, James DeGraffin Wright, that it was suspended until further notice. This came as quite a shock, as there was a meeting scheduled for Friday, and an agenda had already been circulated. The reason for this unilateral decision is the following. Many employees are interested in changing the ways that employees engage in meaningful dialogue with management and affect change in the museum. In deference to those employees, the work of this working group will remain suspended until those issues are resolved. Many staff unfortunately have interpreted this as retaliation for our organizing efforts, especially as the announcement was made so abruptly in advance of today's public hearing. To be dismissed at this critical juncture as the museum begins to enact the goals and policies developed by the working group removes the sole functioning mechanism for communication and collaboration among the staff, the management, and the board. Staff are deeply invested in the goals that have been developed through this process. In forming a single union, not divided among multiple units, but a single union that includes all workers, we aim to create enduring democratic structures that will ensure all workers have a voice in these critical issues that affect not only our working lives, but the lives of our families and our communities across Baltimore. So I sincerely urge you to take action to secure our legal rights to collective bargaining so that we may form a single union that includes all available and eligible workers and that we may continue to build and expand the structures of transparency, accountability, and trust that the museum has pledged to foster, but has unfortunately recently thwarted. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, and we have your written testimony, and it is. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ashley Dimig. If I said that wrong, I apologize.
No, you're great, thank you.
And will you, I need to clear, are you with Walters, or I need to get this kind of clear?
Yes, sorry. Like Gregory, I am a Walters worker, and I am here today as a representative of Walters Workers United. Is that okay?
Thank you, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So I am Dr. Ashley Dimig, and I am the Wheeler-Mellon Postdoctoral Curatorial Fellow in Islamic Art in the Curatorial Department at the Walters. And I live in the 11th district, the same as the museum. So I want to be clear, I love. So I want to be clear, I love my job. I've told countless friends and family, that temporary though it may be, because it's a termed fellowship position, that this was it. This was my dream job. I moved to Baltimore for this job almost three years ago. As an art historian, of course, I love the world-renowned collection that I have the privilege to steward. But through my work at the Walters, I've come to realize that the work is really about community, the ones we've served throughout Baltimore, and the one within our walls. Our work is about connections, and it is wholly collaborative. So how lucky are we then, that so many of our coworkers are wonderfully supportive, creative, thoughtful, and brilliant? Unfortunately, the workers at the Walters are not supported by management as we should be. We want a safe workplace and job security, rather than being constantly afraid of losing our livelihoods, our careers, or jeopardizing our health. We want to be respected and empowered, rather than being gaslit and mistreated and mistrusted. Our hard work and dedication should be compensated appropriately, rather than being asked to do more with less. We want transparency and collaboration, rather than more reorganizations. We want a democratic process, rather than decisions being made behind closed doors. In short, we want a seat at the table so that we're, we can help build a better workplace so that we can do our best work. I have experience with unions and other jobs, and I've seen firsthand how they can ensure not only the health of the workers, but the health of the institution itself. And this is why we're here today, to urge the City Council to exercise its authority and support us by guaranteeing our rights to collectively bargain, so that we can give our best back to the city of Baltimore and its communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dimig. We did receive your written testimony, and that has been filed. We are now going to ask questions from the committee, and I have one question so far from Mr. Patterson. You mentioned something about a city council being able to introduce an ordinance. Could you go further into that for me?
Yes, thank you. I'd be happy to. I appreciate the question. What we have in mind is an ordinance that would confer the same right to collectively bargain on the Walters employees as is conferred on practically any other employee in the state, local government, or federal sector. And that is within the City Council's power. Because the NLRB lacks jurisdiction over the Walters, under the city charter, you are free to legislate regarding your police power and general welfare. That includes employment matters, employment issues, but also it includes collective bargaining rights. You've done a threat, at least, or executive order with the home care workers. Such an ordinance would be permissible, and this was stated in the Law Department's recent opinion, that you can pass ordinances as long as they do not conflict with state law. An ordinance granting to, the right to bargain to these employees who have been left out, really, this kind of gap, and loss as to them, would be, would not only be, would be consistent with state law, it wouldn't be inconsistent at all. And there's nothing in the 1933 or the 1959 laws, state laws, that apply to Walters that would, would be, would prevent or, or, or conflict with that type of an ordinance. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you. I would like to follow Ms. Hillary Ruley from the Law Department to kind of chime in on that, please.
Yes, I would respectfully disagree. While we do have broad authority under the charter for public health and welfare, as noted, we are always subscribed by state law. And contrary to the analysis just given, the state law makes it quite clear that this is a public corporation, not a private one. These are not municipal employees. They are not government workers for which the city has any ability to legislate their right to unionize. They may be considered a certain government type under federal labor laws that determine or impact how they vote. But with respect to the city, we would not approve, reforming legal sufficiency, any kind of law that somehow deemed them able to participate in the city's unionization process, because we don't have any labor rights, we don't have any plenary power to affect labor rights of non-city employees, just like we couldn't pass a law that said, you know, people in Under Armour could organize. We couldn't pass that law here, because state law is clear that they made this entity a private corporation. We were given only very limited powers, and they were not over the employment terms. In fact, in the 50s, when we wanted to assist the Walters in terms of having them be part of certain benefit packages, help them with social security withholding, we had to go back to the state to have another state law passed in order to facilitate that. So we simply do not have plenary powers over their employment, and we could not, as a legislature, the City Council, could not bless their unionization effort. We have no legislative authority over that, because they are not city employees, and it's not a city agency.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ruley. Real quick, I'm gonna go to the next person. I'm just letting all my colleagues know, we're gonna do two questions per councilperson. Only have, only have one so far, so I'm gonna come back. Let me just ask a second, so I can get that right. What records do Walter employees have? Do they go to the state? What recourse?
Councilman, my understanding is that both parties, both the employees and the Walters Board, or, you know, employer, both have legal counsel. They have a complicated dispute about what it means under federal law for their right to unionize. They can unionize, there's no dispute about that, but the reality is there's very complicated federal law on how to do a satisfactory union election, and what kind of entities they are, how the NLRB would handle it. We couldn't give them legal advice on how to do that, because frankly, even if we wanted to, we are not specialized labor law lawyers. We would have no idea what is the best avenue for them legally to organize. They certainly have the right to organize, but they would need competent legal counsel, and my understanding is they have that.
Thank you. Well, I'm move on to our next, next colleague. I'm gonna start off with Council President Sharon Mellett from the 6th District.
Mr. Chair, I recuse myself from this bill and also from the vote, so just wanted to make that a public record. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Councilman Zico has his hand up from the 1st District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Alexander. Thank you, Ask Me. Thank you to the bill sponsor, and thank you to the workers. Just as a quick personal note, I'm a longtime fan of the Walters. It's an amazing museum with some of the best collections around the world. The best part about it is the staff that works there. In all my experiences at the Walters, they've been universally kind, knowledgeable, and courteous. They deserve all of our respect. The Walters is an incredible anchor institution, and we should be proud that they're part of Baltimore. That said, my understanding is that we're at something of an impasse at this point between management and labor. Dr. Alexander, would you commit to meeting with the workers and Ask Me to discuss the process from here?
So I, again, thank you so much, Councilwoman Cohen, and I so appreciate all of your sentiments, and I, I agree that the best part of the Walters are the people who work there, including all the amazing people who have testified today, so I want to thank them as well. I've been very clear from the beginning that any meeting with any group, with a group who opposes the union, with a group that doesn't represent the union yet, with people who do represent the union, that that is actually, or the group of people who want to unionize, that that is taking a stand. I am choosing one group over another, and the process at this point is that I do not interfere. I do not, I do not meet, because inadvertently, I could do something that would influence someone. At this point, no words, no interference, no discussion is the only role that I play that allows every single union-eligible employee to learn and to make up his/her their decision at this point.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, and realize that it's obviously incredibly challenging to try to navigate all different sides of a thing, but, you know, it would seem that, you know, just being able to have conversation, even if it's mediated, I mean, we have some really great community mediation services that are not, you know, pro-labor, pro-management, don't, I think particularly care about the Walters. So, you know, is there any way to sort of just broker a conversation, I guess, with both sides? Because it does feel like there's something of an impasse, and a conversation with the workers seems like a decent step forward.
Before you, before she answer, real quick, Councilman, this is your second question.
Yep. I'll get my second, second question on the way back. That's fine.
I just repeat that taking any kind of position at this point with any kind of meeting about this is actually contrary to the law, unless I change my decision to move forward and do something that is not my responsibility at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and look forward to next round. Thank you, Dr. Alexander.
I see Councilman Burnett from the 8th District has his hand up. Councilman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. My first question is for the Director. So earlier in this hearing, the Ask Me representative noted that the Walters fails the Hawkins test and is not eligible for NLRB. I guess, what is your response to that? And if that is the case, how can folks actually move forward with the organization taking that position?
And thank you, Councilman Burnett. I look forward to meeting with you at some point in the, in the future, and thank you for all the work that you do. I would return to the City Law Department's findings, and I would also say that our council in deep exploration of this subject does very strongly believe that the NLRB does have jurisdiction, and I am not a lawyer, so I will listen both to the City Law Department and also our council that believes that there is clear jurisdiction of the NLRB over the Walters Art Museum.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Chair, for my second question, I wanted to direct to the Labor, City Labor Commissioner, if they're still on. And I thought this was mentioned earlier, but I just wanted to come back to it. Can the, the, the Labor, Officer of the Labor Commissioner, could you oversee or run a third-party election or validate a voluntary recognition of the union?
Ms. Brown? She's still on?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Brown is still on, and it looks like she had herself unmuted, but we could not hear her, but she is still on the line.
Mr. Chair, I guess.
Let me, let me see if we can get Ms. Brown real quick again, if you don't mind.
Okay, no worries. Thank you.
She's had some technical difficulty, so, Councilman, then we'll come back around. I guess that'll be one of your other questions for Ms. Brown.
Okay, I'll hold off.
Thank you, your esteemed chairman.
Sorry, thanks, guys. Councilman Glover from the 13th District, do you have any questions? Councilwoman Glover? Okay. Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District, do you have any questions?
No, Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions. Thank you so much.
You, I'm gonna go down to Councilman Costello. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, thank you. Councilwoman Odette Ramos, do you have any questions? Councilwoman Ramos? Okay, we're gonna go back to the sponsor of this actual resolution. Councilwoman Torrance from the 7th.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have two questions, and this is me just being process-oriented. One is for the Walters. The workers have stated that they wanted to do a NLRB process.
Real quick, I'm sorry. Let me go back to Councilman Bullock, if you don't mind, and then we'll come back to you. Is that all right?
It's fine. I'm patient.
Thank you. Councilman Bullock?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have two questions. One, that is toward the Walters and Director Alexander, and then one toward those who are representing the workers and potential unionization. So for, for the, for the Walter side, Director Alexander, have there been any other organizations or unions that have expressed interest in representing the employees, or employees requested other organizations be involved in this process? Because I guess, and, and just to give a little framework for the question, wondering if there are, in fact, competing groups, because you mentioned trying to be neutral in this.
Thank you, Councilman Buck. Great to see you. I loved, I loved spending time with you last, two weeks ago. Thank you, it was lovely to see you. And, no, not to my knowledge, but again, I have been hands-off in this process, so I am not aware of any of that.
Okay. And then for, on the unionization side, so it seems like there's, there is consternation about the NLRB process and the ability for the vote to be certified. Am I correct in terms of what we're believing here? Because again, you mentioned the jurisdictional issue, so is the fear that if you went that route, the vote would not be certified? Or, and then also, why haven't you then asked for that at this point? So I'll just kind of get some clarity, just so we all know what the challenge is there.
This is T. Patterson. I'm happy to answer that question. Thank you for the opportunity. The Walters Workers United is a union formed from across, across the entire museum for eligible employees. Same eligible employees, they live, there are certain employees that are excluded from collective bargaining, those are management and confidential employees and supervisors, okay? And so all the other eligible employees have formed a union. Now, some of those employees could be classified by the NLRB as, as guards. They're not really guards, they're more monitors, but that's a question the Board would decide. And so the, and the Board would not, in deciding that question, the Board would not process an election petition that we filed, because it couldn't certify that particular type of union. Now, it's kind of irrelevant. The reason why it's irrelevant is because the NLRB doesn't have jurisdiction. I know that Museum Director said that she heard the Law Department saying that the NLRB does have jurisdiction. I didn't hear them. I didn't hear the Law Department representative attorney say that. What I heard her say was that she viewed the Walters as a, as not an agency of the city. Obviously, there's disagreement on that. The question of processing an NLRB petition is, is, is difficult for us, because in my experience, I've been doing this for 20 years, over 20 years. I know the difference between what is, what the Board considers as a public entity I know the difference between what is, what the Board considers as a public entity and a private entity. And the Walters is clearly in the public category. Now, museum director did reference a number of museums that had held, that had petitioned the NLRB to hold elections. And she's right, many of those museums did that. But that's because those museums are clearly private entities. They don't, they're, they're on public land. They're not administering collections owned by the city. The city, city or other public institutions, public governments, don't, don't pay things like benefits, social security taxes. The Walters isn't even a 501(c) entity like those institutions are. Those institutions are all 501(c)(3), okay, which means that they are incorporated under private statutes. The Walters is incorporated as a public corporation. You heard the Law Department say that earlier today. And its entire existence is as a result of the state law and also city ordinances. That's its entirety of existence. Its retirement plan is a governmental plan, okay? It, the, the, it's, it's property tax exemption, and there's a case that says this, right? Maryland Court of Appeals case, its property tax exemption exists because it is a government instrumentality. Says, Maryland Court of Appeals said that. It's clear to me, okay? And I've looked at this, I think, deeper than anyone at this point. It's clear to me that this is not a private institution subject to the NLRB, just isn't. And that's why we, we just can't go down that. And if we did, like I said, we don't know when we would come out of that. But we do know when we come out of that. We will not have a certified union. And that's why the position that the museum management is taking is, you know, really, I mean, I, I, I want to be diplomatic here, but it's really problematic, because on the one hand, it's saying this is the proper process, but they're not acknowledging that that process doesn't apply to this institution. I appreciate you letting me go on and on about that. Thanks for the question.
And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'll just say, no, this is, you know, I think this is a confusing issue for, for, for a lot of us, to be quite frank. And, you know, I appreciate you taking the time to allow us to ask these questions. You know, it seems like there's a really gap in the communication as it relates to what's going on on either side of this, whether we're talking about voluntary recognition, if we're talking about ASME or any other groups. And so hopefully, you know, there can be a coming to minds around this, so we can do our best for the workers and the museum.
And I agree with you, Councilman. It is very confusing, but I wanted to emphasize, Ms. Hillary Rulie, to kind of, can she rule on what Mr. Patterson just said?
Sure. I, I think one of the confusions is whether or not the city can legislate is the question that I answered. That is wholly separate from the question about whether or not, under federal law, the NLRB process is appropriate. They're two separate questions. I can't answer the latter. I have no legal analysis on whether it meets the particular tests or not. It could, in fact, be that the city can't legislate that, which I know to be the case, but also that the NLRB can't have the election, or maybe the city can't legislate and the NLRB can have the election. They're two separate legal issues. I have no labor law expertise, nobody in the Law Department would, about trying to answer how they go about it, because that, you know, that requires a specific labor law lawyer to opine on it, and we don't have that expertise. We don't do that. All I can simply say is that the city has limited legislative powers. And they have, while they might be broad in some areas, they have been limited by the state law here, which says that this entity is created as a Maryland public corporation. And so for that, and that its employees consistently over the years, its employees are not municipal employees. So they don't fall under what the city could legislate. That doesn't necessarily mean anything with respect to the federal law. It may have some impact, it may not. But it just simply means that the city isn't the entity to legislate the unionization. We don't have a legislative role to play there. Whether or not a federal judge looks at everything and says that it does or doesn't fall within the NLRB process is not something I would be able to opine on. I mean, we just don't have that kind of legal expertise, because again, you know, we don't need it for purposes of municipal labor relations. So I, I have no idea whether or not the NLRB process would work or would not work. They're just two separate entities, or two separate issues.
Thank you so much. Councilman Torrance sponsors the resolution. And after Councilman Torrance, Councilman Glover, you will be next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I know this really got to the question about the public corporation piece, but I want to just draw back on the process portion of it. And my question is to the Walters, are you open or willing to do another process otherwise in the NLRB, NLRB process? That's my first question. And if not, why?
So I'll go back to, thank you, Councilman Torrance. Nice to see you. I'll go back to what I've said before. It's inappropriate for management to be involved at this process. So asking me to take some other avenue is asking me to do something that is, that is not my job. And I feel very strongly about that. Our employees need to choose their next steps on their own, because it is there. Every single union-eligible employee, it is there. This will affect them. And I have no, no, I have no horse in that race, and it is not, I shouldn't even be at the race. So that's what I'm trying to, that's what I keep trying to say. So it's not, it is very important for me to try to make that as, as clear as possible. I have no role in this at this point, and taking a role is taking a stance.
My next question is, are you aware that the NLRB process would exclude the museum workers who are classified as guards from being a part of the bargaining unit?
So I understand that the NLRA precludes security from being in the same unit as other workers. I will say that that has in no instance in the museum sector prevented security from being represented in a collective bargaining unit when they have petitioned to do so?
But would you recognize the guard unit, the, your guards, as a part of the entire unit? And so if you go through your process of the NLRA, apologies?
My job is not to recognize or not recognize. My job is to work with a certified union or unions once those employees have gone through that process. And there is a union at, or unions at the Walters Art Museum. And then it is my responsibility to bargain in good faith with those employees and do so efficiently and effectively.
My next question is, do you, can you confirm that you? Okay. Are you?
Councilman Glover?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm having some technical difficulties with the mute and unmute button. But my question is to, I guess, for the unionization side of it. I just want to know exactly what jobs are you pushing to be unionized? Could you give me or give the, you know, the committee a description of exactly what job you guys are pushing for? What positions? Do you guys hear me? It was like on and off.
I can hear you. I didn't, I don't know if I, if I should answer that, or maybe one of the Walters workers would like to answer. But I, I mean, the Walters Workers United Union, right, which is affiliated with ASME, who I work for. I know there might be some confusion about that, is formed by and among workers from all classifications, except supervisors and management and confidential employees. So it's a standard, what I'm going to call a well-to-well unit, a well-to-well group, which would accept, you know, everyone for membership and within, and, and to bargain on, on their behalf. Obviously, it would include full and part-time employees. Say that, obviously, because in like the labor law, you don't usually distinguish between full and part-time. I hope that answered your question, but, but basically all classifications, except for supervisor or management, what they call confidential employees, which are basically like the manager's assistant, essentially. And perhaps?
Okay, do, do the, do the museum have, like, temporary employees working there now? Like, full-time temporary employees?
I mean, ordinarily, a temporary employee is in, is part of the bargaining unit unless, possibly, and I don't get, this is another area of the law, that unless they may be employed by, like, a tenth agency. And then there's a whole test about whether they're within the union or not, but we don't have to go into that. But yeah, I mean, temporary employees are usually in the bargaining, because they're, because of their classifications. But it's generally about what job you do, you know, and here we're seeking one of our units, so they would be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, I'm, Ms. Yvette Brown is back on, so I'm gonna go back to the second round. And Councilman Burnett, I know you had the question, so that'll be one of your next two questions. So floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, and I only had one for this round, and that was to the Labor Commissioner. Could your office oversee or run a third-party election or validate a voluntary recognition of the Union?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Our office could not facilitate an election, but we could certify the votes once it was done.
Got it.
Meaning, we'd have a third-party, independent party count the votes, and once they're counted, we can certify whether the employees agree to be in a union or not to be in a union.
Got it. Okay, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Now I'm gonna go back to Councilman Torrance, your two questions. Floor is yours, sir. Councilman Torrance? Okay, if you, I see a number of our colleagues have their hands raised. You can take that down, because I don't know if you still have questions, and then we can start the second round. So if you've got questions, just leave your hands up for the second round. I'm sorry. Let me see. Councilman Torrance, are you still here?
Things have problems, Mr. Chair, like?
Okay, thank you. Councilman Zeke Cohen, two questions, sir.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, thank you to everyone for being here. Director Alexander, just trying to parse a little bit some of the words around, since there's this, this discrepancy with the NLRB process, you said that you want to stay out of it and not say whether to go with a different process or not. But I guess my question is, if a majority of the workers in the institution wanted to go with a third-party, non-NLRB outfit to conduct the election, would you be amenable to that?
Again, that requires me to take a position at a point when it's not my business. It's not my business.
But, but I'm saying, but I'm saying if the workers took the position that, the majority of the workers took the position that that's what they wanted to do, no, you, you still feel like it?
I'll go back to what I said to you. I'm responsible, what I said to you earlier. I'm responsible for every single employee in the museum, in many ways, as is leadership. And you are responsible for all of your constituents. And that is why I will sit back at this point and wait until such time as a vote is processed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director Alexander.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen.
Mr. Chairman stepped away briefly. He'll be right back. Councilman Bullock?
Yes, thank you. So Director Alexander, you know, I can appreciate, you know, you saying that you want to, again, remain neutral, not interfere with the process. Do want to then hear from, you know, the folks, you know, in terms of the unionization, Mr. Patterson, what constitutes interference, right? Because I think there's a legitimate point in terms of not want to interfere with the process. But what would constitute interference?
I'm really grateful for that question, because it's, as a laborer, it's hard for me to sit here and hear what I'm hearing, because it is so completely out of the realm of what law actually says, that it's, it's hard for me to sit still. So, I let, let me take, let me read you something from the NLRB's website, NLRB.org, because this is ready for the general public to understand the process. And here's what it says, and I'm quoting this, I'm quoting this. Quote, "In addition to NLRB-conducted elections, federal law provides employees a second path to choose or represent itself. They may persuade an employer to voluntarily recognize a union after showing majority support by signed authorization cards or other means." Okay, that is from the NLRB's website. Now, if it was unlawful, right, like Ms. Alexander said, if it was unlawful for her to accept that process, why would the NLRB put that language on its website? I mean, it's just, it's just not conceivable that her position is legally correct based on that. And here's the other reason why. Everyone knows that in the private sector and the public sector, voluntary recognition is commonly done, okay? The Board has said that in a failure period, it received over 1,300 notices of extending voluntary recognition. In order to extend voluntary recognition, okay, the NLRB requires only one thing, which is evidence of majority support. That evidence can be in the form of cards, it can be a petition, it can be a strike. If the employees go out on strike and shut the place down, that is objective evidence of majority support. It doesn't have to be an election. And that's why the NLRB's website says, signed authorization cards or other means. Now, we are not afraid of an election, right? We want an election. And so that's why we are offering to have an election to prove our majority support. The idea that an employer can't agree to that because it would be taking a stand or taking a position, or, or is contrary to law, is sheer fabrication. And I know, okay, I know the Walters Museum has capable labor council, and I know they would never say that, because it's just not true.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just go to Director Alexander.
I'm not sure I answered your question, and so, which was actually what constitutes interference. What constitutes interference would be establishing, interference would be when an employer attempts to dissuade employees, right? Or confirms recognition without the evidence I mentioned before. Those are the two things that constitute interference. We're not asking to have recognition without evidence. We have the evidence. We can provide it to you, you know, now, frankly. So I just, I just want to make sure I actually answered the actual question you asked me. Thank you.
That, that, thank you. That was helpful. And I would just say, you know, I mean, from all accounts we can see, you know, Director Alexander, doesn't seem like you're interfering. But then has that information that Mr. Patterson just mentioned, has that been brought to you in terms of that evidence of, that majority of workers wanting to go this route? Has that been brought to you? Has that been brought to you?
So there's so much here that is very, very partisan, and I just want to say that at this point, again, taking evidence from one group or another is actually taking a side, and that if people want to get to this quickly, just, just go and get a vote. Go to the vote. Me looking at what might be a vote isn't, isn't actually taking an action by the employees. That's asking me to take an action when that, this is in their hands, this is in the employees' hands, this is not in my hands, and take this to the NLRB and have the NLRB decide that it doesn't have jurisdiction, then we're in a new place. But asking me to do something at this point is actually asking me permission to do something, and that is not my permission to give.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm sure other members have questions, Paula, but thank you both for the response.
Thank you, Councilman. We're gonna go to Councilback, Councilman Torrance, and then we're gonna go to public testimony. So Councilman Torrance, are you back?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Floor is yours, sir.
Sorry, guys, my internet router does not like me today. My, my question is to the Labor Commission. Could we, I know about this, I know Ms. Director Alexander does not want to interfere, as she says, or take a position. Could we, as the city, receive the authorization cards and verify their authorization cards to show proof that there are persons in support of majority support of for unionizing? I just want to know if that's a role that the city could do through the Labor Commission's office.
Through the Labor Commissioner's office, we would get an independent party outside of our office to count the votes, and once they're counted, and if there's a majority yes or no, we will certify that and let, let the Walters Museum know what that outcome is in the union. So to answer your question, yes, we can certify the votes and have them counted.
I appreciate you, I just wanted to make sure because I know the authorization cards can count as a, as a vote in that employers may provide a list of employees, eligible employees that they may see eligible, may provide a list of eligible employees at their actual workplace so that they can be confirmed, those votes can be confirmed, cast by those said persons privately. My question is to the both parties, is would you be amenable to a process where the third-party is, is a person that the city finds?
Yes, for, for, for the workers, we say yes.
No, because we believe that the NLRB has jurisdiction over this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. So we will be going to public testimony. Before we start, for those who sign in using a computer, please use the hand, raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify. We will start with you. Next, we will go through all the users that have called into the hearing. Attendees who called in cannot be identified by name and will be unmuted by committee staff one by one, which is long-recurring. You will hear two beeps when you are unmuted. If you wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. If a caller does not want to provide testimony, then simply need to say they don't want to provide testimony after two beeps. If any speaker is inaudible, they will be directed to call back. Each speaker will be allowed two minutes. Ms. Marie, can you go to public testimony? Thank you.
First speaker, you're unmuted. Would you like to testify? Going to the next one.
Hello?
Next speaker? Yes, go ahead.
Can you, can you guys hear me?
Can you hear me? Yes, can you state your name, please?
William Murray. I'm a Walters employee on behalf of the Walters Workers United.
You have two minutes if you'd like to testify.
Sure. First and foremost, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming together to assist us in this process today. I've been an employee in a maintenance department for 23 years. I started as a maintenance technician in 1998 and was promoted to lead in 2003. I've built friendships and relationships, not just with my colleagues, but with artists, community members, and frequent visitors. I think my coworkers hold me in high regard, and I return that sentiment, and I feel so valued by them. However, I do not feel that same support from my immediate leadership. I have watched my friends and coworkers face reorganization after reorganization in the Education Department. Looking into our workplace, you wouldn't guess that our two departments interact as frequently as we do. I have pictures in our office from previous departures in education where we took group pictures to document the occasion just a couple of years ago. The only people remaining at the museum at this point is my colleague in, in maintenance and I. A number of them were terminated after working at the museum for years. The past couple of years, that department has seen a mass exodus. In my case, 2003 was the last year I received an individual increase, other than the staff-wide 1% to 2% at the beginning of the year. During the pandemic, although I was being paid my 80 hours, I realized how meager my paycheck was without the OT I'd gotten used to receiving. I'm grateful for the pay, but the reality is it was tough to make ends meet with my 80-hour check at that pay rate. One of my colleagues actually took on a part-time job that make ends meet. One job should be enough for a living wage. When I started, we had 12 or so employees in the maintenance department. We're now down to four, with the last hire being made just a week ago. Broadway Services was brought in to supplement those other positions. As an agency of the city, does it make sense to contract out these positions? Why are we making the mistake of not keeping our standards high? We need more assistance in the day-to-day duties and a more respectable hourly salary to maintain a sustainable future. The cost of living increases, but our salaries do not. I love the Walters, I don't think anyone would argue that, but that doesn't mean shit, things shouldn't be better. It doesn't make any of us any less committed to the organization or our work. It means we care enough to say the difficult things to ask the tough questions. It's time for someone to listen. These and other factors contribute to our desperate need for a union to bring about more favorable conditions going forward.
Excuse me, Mr. Murray, you have 30 seconds to wrap up, thank you. 30 seconds. Do you have anything you would like to say, Garrett?
Stalnack, hi, yes, I'm Garrett Stalnack, I live in District 14, and I'm a gallery officer at the Walters Art Museum. We are the first people to greet you when you visit. In many cases, we are the only employees that visitors interact with. Despite our critical role, the security department has been consistently undervalued, underpaid, understaffed, and overworked. COVID-19 made these issues clearer than ever before. At the Walters, we are faced, we also faced other serious health and safety concerns when the museum had to close for three weeks this past June. The Walters faced, failed to communicate to staff about organic vapors that made us sick. The Walters' inaction showed how disposable they see their staff. They did nothing to communicate broadly and only did so after a majority of staff sent a letter to management. Communication is very poor at the Walters. In the beginning of the pandemic, we were often given no time to ask questions in morning meetings. As a result of us raising concerns, Julia, the museum director, stopped attending meetings. Hello, can you hear me? Even the Zoom chat function was disabled. Since we were being silenced, we turned to staff emails to raise concerns. Am I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. So we turned to emails to raise concerns, and to tourists from sending us these emails, some security officers were brought into intimidating surprise meetings with the director and HR suggesting that continuing to send these emails could lead to termination. Again, only security was retaliated against. In the past month, listening sessions were planned. Every listening session was canceled except for one because not enough staff signed up for them based on an unknown minimum attendance requirement. After silencing, silencing us in so many avenues, and after years of listening sessions and poor communication, we know that we aren't being listened to and we want a union. Disrespect shows itself in many ways at the Walters. Two of my coworkers who have been working the same position as me for well over a decade were being paid under $15 an hour before this year. Now those coworkers and I make the same amount, and that's not right. Folks have invested decades of their lives in the Walters, and there's nothing that has been done to compensate them for that. I don't see this as achieving pay equity or fairness. I enjoy working at the Walters, but it should not be at the risk of the health and safety of me and my coworkers. Rejecting, requesting meetings, having avenues to address concerns shouldn't take being here today, but it has. Julia refused to meet with us, refuses to meet with us. We need the Walters to be accountable to the city, community, and the staff who work here. Thank you for your time.
Hello?
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Oh, great, thank you. Hello, everyone, my name is Craig Haydom. I'm a community member who has organized large annual events at the Walters and in collaboration with the Walters. I organize the Baltimore Taxidermy Open. I have learned that the security and operational staff are required to work overtime in order to facilitate any events, resulting in the occasional 12- to 16-hour workdays, sometimes with very little advance notice. After reading in the Baltimore Sun and Washington Post about hazardous vapors making workers sick, I just felt disgusted by Walters' leadership and wanted to comment today. The fact that the employees do not have any bargaining rights or labor protections is very troublesome and unacceptable to me, especially considering the Walters relies on significant public investment. Any tactic to stifle off one part of the museum, like eligible employees, trying to take the guards off of that list, it's all just a way to thwart unionization efforts, and it's just a dirty trick. All the workers at the Walters deserve to work in a safe and collaborative environment, and this council has a responsibility to them. I really urge you to support the staff at the Walters by simply allowing them the right to organize and be heard. Thank you.
Hello?
Jordan Robinson?
Yes. Hi, I'm Jordan Robinson, and I'm a part-time gallery officer at the Walters residing in the Walters' own district. I am also tired of losing coworkers to a toxic work environment. I watch as coworker after coworker leave. I've called, I've lost count of how many coworkers have left and not been replaced. It leaves me feeling like one of the last men standing at the Walters. The remaining few and I are left to patrol large areas of the museum, often two or three entire galleries, while feeling like we have no control over things like our safety or quality of work life. I watch it continually. Every week, I receive a new email from our director informing me of another victim to this workplace. I can't help but feel not even valued as a human being when a nearly identical set of buzzwords are used for each of these emails. Every week, I come in and wonder what it will be that week. Besides hemorrhaging staff, nothing is predictable. Some weeks, we have to deal with vipers getting us sick, while the next, we are working a mandatory 16-hour shift to staff a wedding, one in which our safety was at risk because our mask rules were not followed. I am exhausted from not being listened to. The administration pretended to listen to us, but now they've given up on even feigning that, suspending the Diversity, Equity, Accountability, and Inclusion Joint Working Group, and refusing to meet with us and our union representatives. Instead, they posture for the public, as exemplified by the overdue and reactionary release of our director just yesterday, the director of security. This man was the subject of a hostile workplace environment before the pandemic, but it is only now that he is let go once we have this city council meeting regarding our union. Our security director was problematic, but he is, was a symptom of the greater problem. My colleagues and I still work at an institution that allowed this to fester for over two years. We need this union, one that represents all of us, from safety and security to education, all departments in between, because the Walters chose now to fire our department, our director for appearances. Now, two days before our annual gala, our most important event of the year, leaving us without a director, but it's okay because we have a new manager with a week's experience. We try to form a union, and the Walters has done everything from suspending the diversity initiative to firing our security director. Management says that they don't want to be involved, but they have no problem stealthily hindering us and stealthily influencing the process. They throw everything at us except for what we want. We don't want to keep, we don't want them to keep hurting the institution, we just want them to work with us. Please hold the Walters accountable for its harmful, thoughtless, and reactionary treatment to workers. It has been 150-something days because--
30 seconds, Mr. Robinson, 30 seconds.
Thank you. It has been 150-something days because officers like Garrett and I deserve collective bargaining rights along with our coworkers, not separate. We deserve our union, thank you.
Margaret Tomquist?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm a resident of Baltimore and a local artist who is in support of these workers forming a union altogether. All workers deserve a union, and the Walters Art Museum workers have collected a supermajority of support for one. I believe in the power of a strong democracy, including and especially in the workplace. As someone who tried to organize their workplace last year during the pandemic and was forced out by a harsh union busting campaign, I'm also strongly opposed to the use of public funds on union busting consultants who have clearly been giving advice in this case. What these workers are doing is not just courageous, but necessary for the progress of society. The Walters workers, all of them together, deserve the union that they say they want. Solidarity forever.
Yes, thank you, members of the city council. My name is Sam Metacandedo, and I live in District 12. I have been working at the Walters Art Museum for almost one and a half years, and I work in the Conservation Collections and Technical Research Department. I joined the organizing committee of the Walters Workers United because I believe my coworkers and I deserve respect, trust, and a seat at the table, in particular when it comes to making decisions that directly impact us. I have seen too many of them getting fired for no real reason, some didn't even get an acknowledgement, they just disappeared one day. I know many are not properly compensated for their work, including being forced to sign documents capping their pay or they would be fired. All of us are doing the jobs of three or more people, but the pay is still low. Instead of supporting staff with living wages, museum management investing consultants, and a union busting law firm, we're tired, burned out, and overwhelmed. In fact, so many coworkers have quit, about eight or nine in the past month alone, and the museum won't fill many of those positions. The DAI working group was suspended because of our union efforts, even though a couple months back, they shared the DAI goals with the public and made a huge deal about it. The institution wants to be seen as progressive and anti-racist, but their actions, in particular towards frontline staff, who many happen to be people of color, show its awful intentions and promises. All the while, the director refuses to meet with us or admit something is wrong. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us, museum workers. I urge you to please amend the municipal code to grant Walters Workers United collective bargaining now. We ask that you advise the Walters Art Museum to voluntary recognize us or to let us have a neutral third-party vote, not with the NLRB, to ensure we can have a wall-to-wall union to protect all workers, not multiple unions, as the director mentioned earlier, but one union. Thank you so much.
First call-in user, would you like to testify?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Divya Ananthraman. I work with the Walters Art Museum during the annual Baltimore Taxidermy Open held there. I've also lectured there and have donated my artwork, which is on display at the Walters Art Museum. My experience there was met with respect and professionalism thanks to the amazing staff. The workers I engaged with, from the guards to the conservators, were helpful, passionate, and vital to facilitating my work there. You could tell that everyone really cared about the work they do. So I found it really upsetting and disappointing that the museum and its director didn't take a more progressive approach when the workers formed their union. It's extremely important that all workers have a voice in the decision-making process. As a queer woman of color, I know that very few artworks at the Walters have been contributions from people like me, both currently and historically. Now the Walters has an opportunity to set an example, not just in Baltimore, but in the larger museum community, by showing real and meaningful support, by not just making verbal statements and acquiring artworks from diverse people, but recognizing the needs of their diverse workforce there. Unions lift all voices, but in my experience as a woman and as a person of color, I know that we find more equality in the workplace when we have the ability to organize. I believe that city councils should do everything in its power to ensure that the workers at the Walters has a union. I also call on the Walters to demonstrate-- to demonstrate meaningful commitment to diversity and inclusion by listening to the people, voluntary recognizing the workers and their union, and to be better and live up to their mission. I love the Walters, and thank you so much.
Yes. Next call-in user?
Hi, this is Vice President Middleton.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I can't get back on the thing, so I'm on the phone. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next user? Hello? Is this still Councilwoman Middleton? Okay. Next call-in user, do you have anything you would wish to say? Okay, well. That's, oh, one more person. Max Fisher?
Hi, thank you. My name is Max. I'm a community member, resident of Baltimore City, and frequent guest at the Walters. I just want to make a brief statement. Some observations I have from listening in on this conversation. It's clear to me from worker testimony about workplace conditions today that workers need the protection of a union. It's also clear from the supermajority of cards signed that the vast majority of workers at the Walters want a union. It's also clear from the tactics that management have employed, including hiring the services of a union busting law firm, that they are engaged in an anti-union campaign. It's clear from Dr. Alexander's statements that she is not in fact neutral, as she claims, but is opposed to the union. And I just want to put these facts out in the open so people can kind of think about that as they proceed forward. Thank you.
That concludes public testimony.
Thank you. I just have one more question before I do some closing remarks, and Councilman Torrance, you are the sponsor of the bill. You're welcome to do closing remarks after myself. But this is for Mr. Patterson. Has, maybe I missed a question. Has a union ever gone to NLRB for an official ruling?
Well, we, we, we don't have that opportunity. The, the, a ruling, the, the way they, the board issues decisions is in adjudicating cases. And so we can't, there's no process to go and ask the board's opinion. But, so I, I, so the, I guess the answer is no, but the reason is because there's no, there's no way to get, you can't get a legal opinion from the board. You have to trigger the process and go down that path, and any ruling, like I said earlier, is appealable and by, by, by the parties. And it's appealable, it's appealable four times. It's appealable to, to, well, maybe three times. It's appealable to the NLRB. It's, it's appealable to the Circuit Courts of Appeal. And it's appealable to the Supreme Court, US Supreme Court. And so any, you know, any, any ruling on this question, I mean, we, we, we've done the analysis. There's no question in mind. And, and there shouldn't be any question in my mind because for the reasons I stated earlier, it's crystal clear. I think that the Department even said that Walters is a public corporation, okay, not a private one. Anyway, the point is that going down that path is a long path, and it would not lead to what the workers need right now. You've heard what they're going through. You've heard what they need. And that path will not, will not get them what they need for years and years to come. I mean, I have cases that were filed with the board in 2012, 2008, that are still going on because they, they have these contested issues. One of them is the Browning Ferris case, and we may not have heard about them news over the last eight years. We're not gonna let that happen here. But I appreciate the question. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna do some closing remarks after I finish. Councilman Torrance, you are welcome to do some closing remarks, and then we will take a vote. I applaud Walters Workers United. They clearly love where they work and what they do. But there's differing opinions about many things. NLRB jurisdiction, and which, and which level of government has jurisdiction. And the city law department says we cannot legislate or confer collective bargaining rights. I support every worker's right to unionize if they choose. And clearly, the workers strongly desire to be represented by a union. However, at this point, it seems both sides have to consult their legal counsel for appropriate next steps. But I strongly urge Walters management and the Walters Workers United to at least consider neutral arbitration. While I hear management does not want to take a position, it's important that we move past this and find a respectful resolution that recognizes workers' wishes. Thank you. Councilman Torrance, if you have any closing remarks, you're welcome to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have to add that Councilman Cohen needs to be elevated from attendee to panelist. He was kicked off. I will concur with the chair's assessment, but also concur with the chair's call to action about having a third-party neutral to resolve this issue between not only the workers, but as well as the Walters. I clearly see that there's a difference in the process, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to see both sides discuss the process and the pluses and minuses to those processes. But I encourage that the best interests of persons in recognizing the individuals who are the blood as well as the soul of the Walters should be put at the forefront. And I say that because I recognize that this is a cultural institution that receives significant financial benefit from the city of Baltimore and its citizens. I recognize that the workers at this institution are also citizens of Baltimore, as well as its directors and its board members. I think this is a perfect opportunity for us to put Baltimore first and come to a resolution that is meaningful not only for the workers, but also for the Walters. And with that, I yield back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. That concluded the public testimony and the closing remarks, so the committee will take a vote. Is there a motion to vote on Resolution 21-0050R?
Someone, Mr. Chair.
Made by Councilwoman Porter. Is there a second?
Second.
Who was that?
Cohen.
Thank you. Second made by Councilman Cohen. Stokes is a yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Bullock, a yes. Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Cohen is a yes. Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Is it yes? Council Vice President Middleton abstained? Am I correct, Councilwoman? Okay, she already, okay. Councilwoman Porter?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to have an opportunity to explain my vote, sir.
Sure.
Yes, um, thank you all, so, thank you all so much for, for bringing this.
Yeah.
Councilman Glover, I believe you're on.
You know what?
Councilman Glover, you gotta put your phone on me. I may put your computer on me. Sorry.
Thank you.
They come back to me when they got whatever they get. I can't make them do things.
Councilman Glover?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I'm just want to take a moment to explain my vote. I applaud, I applaud the employees for bringing forth their concerns, particularly the ones related to public health and clear OSHA guidelines related to public safety within your work environment and also your overall quality of life. And so just wanted to applaud the employees for bringing this to the council's attention, and I look forward to working with the Walters management to address not only the workplace issues, but also particularly for me, the public, public health issues that many of the employees brought up today. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Torrance?
Hi, Mr. Chair.
It's a yes. The motion passed. This resolution will be placed on second read on Monday, October 18th, 2021. I want to thank everyone for attending this hearing, and this hearing is concluded.